Good morning. It is Thursday, August 31st, 2023 at 7:01 a.m. This is a special school board meeting of the Old School Board, and we are meeting in the Old School School's central conference room. All board members are present as well as staff and guests in the room and online via Zoom. Welcome, everyone. We'll start by the pledge of allegiance.
Let's do the United States of and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with just for all.
Welcome, visitors and staff in attendance, either in person or online. Thank you for being here.
You represent that name?
Yes, yeah, he has been. She's presenting. More nervous now.
I see they recognize that name.
Alright, so the items on our agenda are the possible declaration of emergency, the ICS presentation and discussion of the chiller. It's a special meeting, so we cannot alter this agenda. So we'll start with discussion of possible declaration of emergency. So you have an interview of this course.
So according to the century code, if anything that was over, first we have bids, which is a process of two weeks in the newspaper, which Anna knows all of the multiple week. It's something that you would need to purchase. So during the plumbing situation, declared a state of emergency or a situation, emergency situation, then you would purchase things if we needed to that were more than $5,000. So, but if a school board declares that there is an emergency situation, they can vote to declare the emergency situation and then we can forego having to put things out of bids. Even though they don't say that that's the best thing to do, best practice is to be creative. So that would be up to you if you decide that you want to declare emergency situation with our HVAC system, face things wrong, or if you feel that this is not an emergency situation.
Okay, and so you're asking us to consider this with regard to item C, the chiller primarily?
Yes.
Is there any chance, the chiller is the problem, is there any chance that there is any problem with our heating? The break was.
You know, a lot of, I mean, that, we're, we're determined we are in a month or month and a half and we'll stay very long.
Alright.
Other than the chiller, that would be the only piece that we have any indication as a break.
Okay, and are there any other questions from the board with regard to declaration of emergency? What does it stand with?
That isn't outlined in century code. Then a must.
What was the question?
Like what's that on that? If we declare a state of emergency with the HVAC system and then say February, is that still covered under that?
I would say that's probably separate. I think, I don't know if that there's, yeah, in century code, I know I went and saw that, but I would say that would be a separate issue.
Alright, is there a motion with regard to agenda item A, declaration of emergency? If there's a motion to declare, then we can discuss. There's a motion. If there's no motion, then we'll move on without that and suppose we could come back to it if someone says the night later.
I'll make a motion.
Sire moves to declare an emergency with regard to the HVAC in the high school, specifically the chiller. Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? I look seconds. Is there any discussion?
I'm not really sure what would define an emergency. I know the plumbing was an emergency because if we didn't fix it right now, we were not going to be able to have school. Now for the chiller, we still have school. We know that that's a wrong, our fix is laid out, so I guess again, that goes to what you guys feel as far as if we need to purchase something right now or purchase later, or we need to deal with it right now?
Comments? Question?
I guess I feel that we should. I feel we should move forward with was that going to be under emergency?
Well, we will discuss it regardless of whether we declare an emergency or not. In my view, the difference is we'll still discuss whether to consider a purchase of a chiller. If we declare an emergency, we don't need to put it out for bids. If we declare an emergency and then we vote not to pursue purchasing a chiller, then I don't think it was much of an emergency. I guess my question is, what is, what is the urgency if the difference is that we would advertise in the paper for two or three weeks? Or bids for a chiller sized appropriately? Are we knowing whether the chiller would be appropriately sized? If we decide today to buy a chiller that we already know about, how soon is it going to be installed? And will a one-month free week or one-month delay make a difference? And if we don't put it out on bids, are we are we doing the best we can for it? I don't see that. The air conditioning would be more than emergency. I mean, it's obviously something that's not going to get fixed before the winter term, you know? So I don't see that as an emergency, so. Is there possibly being the chiller looking at, we can purchase basically, you know, screen and install it?
Yes. Absolutely.
That was something that we had to sort of try it without, if they have the building, without the 43.
And then I contacted multiple other suppliers this last week, and everybody else is out. Six, eight, nine months, even a year. But this one that we have on hold right now is our option, is our only option as of right now. So if we let this go by the end of the day, we could be sitting there next year at this point with each other very easily.
And was that does that warrant spending money that we, where will we get the money to pay for this chiller? We don't have any budget, we don't I understand that this period of time in the hot fall weather, which could be four weeks or a month, has makes the building uncomfortable. And I'm not sure it warrants.
I guess I look at this, what type of quality of teaching are we doing? Quality of learning our students. I talked to my girls about it. One, and she says they're concerned themselves with fam and it's hot, it's miserable, so that is their main way of describing them. Not really learning, so are they getting a 70% quality of learning going on up there? Maybe, maybe less, maybe more. So at the end of the day, I guess I look at our school system is to educate our students. And if we hold back on being able to do that, I guess I disagree with them. Agree that, or I believe that we should move forward with getting the chiller so that we can get the best education in our students, our teachers, and staff, and witnesses, and everybody.
What alternatives do our staff have at this point to move their class? What alternatives do we have? I still look at this as a a short-term problem here in the early fall. Maybe somewhat in the spring, we don't know. And then if we move forward with this more comprehensive project, then one more fall and one more spring, but between now and then, we've got time to shoot perhaps to address it.
What are their options?
What are their options?
So, well, we obviously have a lot of fans that are blowing in. And on the cool nights, the last couple of days have been tolerable. I don't know if these next two, three, but they can move, they are not limited to their classroom. They can move into the elementary, the elementary, people are moving around, they're, you know, not going in certain rooms so that they can leave those open for the high school. We have three rooms open in the elementary we can use. They can go wherever they need to go to. That is a cooler spot for them. They're limited, the spots are limited, but they are spots and teachers are at this point, only some of them are choosing to go to those because I think it's difficult when you have that transition time, right? I know that churches have offered that up, you have the transition time to move over to church, the transition time to move back from the church. You don't have the technology that we, you know, use here, so those options are limiting. I'm hoping that, we're looking at forecast, it could be a couple of days this week and maybe a couple of days next week, and then hopefully we'll start getting in the cooler weather. So it's out of 170-day year, maybe 10 days that we're affected by the teachers, you know, it could be.
We also, I believe, have options to move to our own building, the career tech center that has space available that and we run a bus there all day long, any day, right? Certain happy technology, and they have the technology.
I forgot we have the conference room too. We've got other spaces. Oh, the library, yeah, yeah, there's, there are spaces that the teachers can move to and they so. I think it's just difficult.
Third question, what would you be doing by prolonging this?
We would be we would be allowing, we would be able to go out for pints to see other alternatives, which is the appropriate way for taxing districts to operate. To declare an emergency, as I thought about this, as Anna mentioned, I've been on the board for 11 years, since I was 12. I never even heard of declaring an emergency until we had a sewer problem. I asked myself, when I was thinking about this motion, I asked myself, well, what if we, what if we do nothing, we do not declare an emergency? The problem with the chiller is a temporary problem that will go away when weather cools, might be a week, two, maybe even a month. Some days worse than others. Problem with the sewer was truly an emergency. If we did nothing, the problem was not going to go away and we weren't going to be able to function. So I think, and I, you may be right, when if we go out for bids, we may not see anything, but I don't think we're I still don't see this as an emergency. I don't mean, and I, you know, I get, it's miserable in there. I was here one last Thursday when it was 85 or 60 degrees up there. And it's miserable, but I can't say that we're not learning anything. I mean, you know, and there are so many schools in the state do not have air conditioning at all. They deal with it every year. You know, it's just, it's just a matter of adjusting, you know? Building resilience and being proactive about finding solutions. And if it's a hassle to move between classes, then maybe we need to relocate more permanently some, some teaching staff and classrooms for a temporary period of 20 rather than having to move each hour. Any other comments? There any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing that, please call the roll. Rhonda Day.
A new person.
No. Dylan Nagel.
No.
Brian Sire. Monica Heimberg. Bonnie Meele. No, motion fails, one to four. Alright, ICS presentation. Alright. Make sure this is working.
Yeah, I have my understanding of that.
Yes, well, thank you. For those who don't know me, I'm a work person with ICS. And we've been working with the school district for six, seven months now, working on long-range facility planning. So today I'm going to bring back some updated solution from our last meeting that you guys had talked about revising some of your top priorities. We have Anne online from PFM, and she's going to be talking about a financial, she's a financial advisor. And she'll be talking financially, what this would mean for the district as we look at addressing facility needs. We'll talk about some community feedback and then some next. This is a recap. As school board, I know you guys have seen this, but these were the identified needs through all of the data that we had collected between listening sessions, which had stakeholder input, assessments, facility assessment, demographic analysis, and your educational adequacy assessment. So looking at the number one need, this is going to look a little different than last night, but I just kind of wanted to map this all for you. If you look at it, really indoor air quality and life safety would be one of the top needs that I had been hearing and we had seen in the assessments. And this would be where you'd be addressing your HVAC system as a So this is where you'd be addressing your HVAC system at the high school, replacing your, all of your air handling units to provide adequate ventilation space. These systems currently do not provide what today's standards requires. Your boiler and chiller systems, this would be replacing those, they have, they're beyond their life expectancy. And they're like, your boiler system is a little undersized, and you guys just had the discussion on your chillers. So you guys know where that is at. That would include replacing all of the associated equipment and controls and system for a complete HVAC, new HVAC throughout your high school and the gymnasiums. You have pneumatic controls that are inefficient and or they're also kind of beyond their life expectancy, so you'd get a new digital control system. You can be able to schedule temperature, you can have different days, like you have been back on a Sunday. You can change that temperature or you can have temperature setbacks. You'd be able to, as a district, get the alarms and understand where and how your equipment is operating. This would also, to be able to install this, we would be taking down the ceilings. So you would re-get new ceilings, new LED lighting and controls. I know you had done some updates on some lighting, so that we could decide if we could reinstall a few of those, but really your whole high school would have LED lights. And then this also includes, the life safety piece of this is your fire protection. So currently, your gymnasiums have a sprinkler system, but your high school three-story does not. Down in the basement, you do. So I'm sure that was per code when you guys added on the high school or the gymnasiums at some point, it probably required you to do that. But nothing beyond the first, second, and third floor of your high school classrooms do not. So this would include putting fire protection throughout those areas. And then updating the electrical as needed. This is just kind of the same, the same thing, but just giving you a visual. And what, you know, that's your three-story high school for second and third floor. And there you'd get that new, you could see you get new ceiling, lights, controls, and that fire protection. So everything would go in this area.
So back up a moment, please. The library area is not highlighted, so that
What about if you did have sprinkler system with?
Okay, so you're just, you're just showing where the sprinklers would be, the new sprinklers would be.
Is correct.
Would there be any? Are we, does the library have new any better HVAC?
Yes, the library is on this, so the library is on the link that you guys gave me to 1015.
Okay.
And that's a separate system, so we won't be tying into it, but it does have the updated, it has, you know, it is a an updated.
Okay, thank you.
And then this is just showing you what, you know, the areas of the gymnasiums, and these areas do have the fire protection. So with this, the indoor air quality improvements would include the new HVAC and digital controls. And in these spaces, you don't have the ceilings where you're going to take all that down. Be not needed. The next item is your high school classroom size and survivability. This is something we talked about with the last meeting, so this isn't, this will be new, the board hasn't seen this before. But this was really looking at how can we expand your classrooms? We did see in the ad that those high school classrooms are undersized based on guidelines, so there isn't, it's not required, but guidelines kind of show you where they should be. So you do have, the layout of the high school has smaller closets. So since last time, we've been going through structurally, you know, what can, based on the construction of that building, what walls could we remove, how could we gain a little more space? And then what could we do for some of the older? You guys have older chalkboards, you have some whiteboards that you put over the chalkboards. And, you know, how can you update those walls to refresh and really update the classroom space? This would require some patching, so in a lot of the classrooms, you have this newer carpeting that looks fantastic. So we can salvage that. And then we could just cut it back a little bit and then patch from that classroom into the new wall. So it wouldn't have to be all new flooring, except in some areas, it's the older flooring, and then we accounted for all the the update and be similar to the the other newer classrooms. The plaster walls, we, you know, looking at the size of the chalkboards and how they're inset into that wall, it'd be really pulling off all that plaster and then rebuild those walls. And then we need that. Um, we are taking away those storage rooms, so we included a budget in there to do some cabinetry along the sides, and now we still have some storage, but it wouldn't be as big and it'd be much better use of space. So they would still have some areas to put their books and their supplies for the staff. Relocate electrical as needed, as we take down walls, we'd have to do that. And then just to note, these classrooms with the previous indoor air quality improvement would already have the new ceilings, the lights, and the HVAC, so you'd really feel like this classroom is completely redone in these areas.
So those closets in a typical room, how large are they? And then refresh our memory as to this, the current size of the typical classroom and the desired size per standards. How much closer are we getting?
Yeah, so this is, I just want to make a real quick note here too. This, these names in these rooms, don't hold me to this. This was just something that Anna and I kind of talked about is, you know, not only are we trying to gain some space in the classrooms, but we could read, we could shift teachers around to make sure we're maximizing the largest classrooms for student activity. And then some of the flex spaces could maybe go in those smaller rooms, is what we were trying to do. So this was just for us to get there. So a typical high school classroom should be 850 to 950 square. Right now, you have, I would say 650 would be a typical, 650, 675 would be the corner classrooms would be typical. You can see on the second floor by taking out, I highlighted the rooms that we'd be touching, but by taking out those closets, you'd be about 77. So you still would be under that 850. But structurally, I mean, that would, there would be, the way the trusses bear and the load-bearing walls, the cost would be out the roof to be able to, and I don't even know if it's feasible. I mean, anything's feasible, but the amount of structure to put in there, I would not recommend to blow out any other bigger walls. You do have up there in 220, that's 822, so that's getting close to the guidelines. 786 up in 222, by taking out that closet. And then on the second floor, if you go down, we had a study hall in 208, and that's 770. 206, we're able to gain via 930. And then over in 204, that would be back at that 665. You have a lot of plumbing. I don't know if you guys can see my cursor, there we go. So right in this wall here, you have a lot of plumbing right in there. So I first, my first thought was, well, we could blow that out, take that storage room and they can share it, you know, so that both the rooms would get a little bit bigger. But below it, you have the bathrooms, and then above it, you have all the science. So the plumbing that is in those walls, we technically could relocate it, it just all comes in. So right now, in the yellow, those are rooms that are not gaining any square footage, but they would be getting the updates with the walls to remove the chalkboards, the plaster walls, the paint, flooring, and then the cabinetry.
So the names that you have on those rooms are not necessarily who they are right now, that's proposed.
And we were just putting people's names on there so that we could refer to something like, I didn't know the reference.
I know, I was looking at that.
No, that's right. No, because Jess is over there where the open commons area is, but we were just trying to make sure we had all the math features there.
Sure.
But obviously, that's all changeable.
They need 50 and 950 square feet, that's average, how many kids per room?
I think they're about, I think on average, maybe that's 20, 20 to 25 kids in a room.
What's our average in this? What is class, is our eighth grade class right now? Eightth grade?
Yes.
They're the same, that's what, 40?
Forty eight kids.
So the open, on the third floor, what's identified is open commons area and staff, the staff lounge area. Is that open commons, that, could that be considered sort of a student gathering, student?
Because we were talking about some, I mean, when we were looking at the first planner, last time we were talking about, we weren't really addressed with some of the things that the students wanted, right? They wanted some area where they could gather, they wanted a student lounge. But that's also what the staff said was, or their assessment was, that we didn't have any of those open spaces where we could gather kids. So that's what we were trying to figure out an area for our kids, because we had to take away their lounge area, and you know, we figured, let's try to build that back in for the kids.
And as that proposed, it shows a wall and a door there that we're talking about, it would be open. Like, remember when? That can be open now.
Yeah, and that's true. I have been trying to study your old drawings to kind of better understand what can and can't happen. And as Anna was saying, hey, we haven't addressed that, the students, what they're looking for. And then when I look back, I'm like, wait a minute, this was one. And then when I look back, I'm like, wait a minute, this was wide open, so you do have that, it was, yeah, this is about half of it, so.
It was that and then what's now identified as.
Yeah.
That entire thing was open to them, yeah, swallup.
And I, you did have some doors at the end, but they're removed, obviously, um. But that would be a good opportunity, because, you know, otherwise, a lot of the structure bears on the corridor wall. Where this has a beam, a a column in that open commons area, and it actually goes, we'll just say, north and south from this perspective. Versus exterior wall to corridor wall. So just be, and this is, you know, based on on the existing structural drawings and. Dave and I did spend some time walking through it um yesterday, and I did meet with the structural engineer on Tuesday. Just to, you know, cuz they, these are big changes that we wanna make sure um we're looking at every avenue and. There's a lot of history and a lot of things that, you know, aren't as clear when you have an older building. You know, you do the best we can right now. So that would be able, that would be achievable on that three sixteen. The other item I wanted to point out too is, you know, three twenty-two is a, is a really large uh staff workroom at the time. And and I think that's fantastic, but I also, it's a great opportunity to be teaching kids it too. So I, you know, I looked at, well, what about um just right next to this? The teacher lounge currently has a storage room. And what if we took that wall out, cuz I know that that wall was just put up, you know, for storage, and create a bigger staff lounge? We could do some soft seating, you could do, um, you know, freshen up that space and kind of accommodate. Um, if not, you know, I, you know, is there another space? And since some of the rooms don't get used a ton, so could we put them in a smaller? One of the smaller classrooms, so the students can have the bigger. Learning. Okay, any other questions on on that? The items that are not highlighted, the rooms that are not highlighted, um, I do have some names, because we're just wanting to make sure everybody has a space. Uh, but those would not get any updates at this.
Yeah, and then this entire south um portion on the third floor has essentially been redone. Already, right? They would get new ceilings again, right?
They get new ceilings and HVAC.
And windows, yes.
Yeah.
But no interior structural changes, no.
Is it still squeaking?
The transition from one end to the other and, yeah, these squeaks.
I have, and. Have a set of plans that said, in one of your guys' updates in eight two, they were nailing down all the boards to the squeaks.
I'm sure it's still under warranty.
Yeah, so I kinda thought that was, that was a red line that they had noted on there at the best. Um, uh, here are the window improvements that we talked about. This would be, you know, taking out all the the highs, the windows in the high school three-story building. And putting in a new window system, which would be more energy efficient. And I put this energy efficient and safety improvements, um, as you can see in that middle window picture. A book is holding up those, the windows. And I mean, they, they really, they are dangerous, if you pull that, pull that book out, it will drop quickly and and they're heavy. You can also see there's minimal screens, so when you're up on that three-story, there's a few things out on the roof beyond there, because. It's open, you can see that, so this would, this would be replacing those. And with the new HVAC system, I would anticipate that the windows would not be open, so you wouldn't have that. Safety concern. Okay, let's talk about the plumbing, this is something that in the last plan, we had, let's, you know, we, we looked at. Replacing the plumbing in the high school. But that was all above grade, right? We didn't look at any of the below-grade um sewer systems. Anna did have the local plumber do some scoping of the the underground. Um, unfortunately, they did not do the high school. Uh, on the north end of your high school, that was replaced about a year ago, so that actually is PVC. Um, that's in good shape on on the north side, but the south side, where I have highlighted in red. If the service is coming in, if you wanna picture it from the old front door. Right, here is your old front door. And then right out here is a manhole, that's your sewer manhole, that's where your service is coming in. And that's what's picking up this side of the building along with these bathrooms, so we can see that they are tied into the. This is buried, so when he goes below into the basement, you can't see that pipe except for it comes out in a couple of spots, right? So we don't know the condition of it, but we do know it's original, and it would be in the district's best interest to look at. How can we address it? Um, the bathroom, the men's bathroom across the hallway, that's associated with the oh eight or the, I think it was eighty-two, actually. The eighty-two addition over here. And these locker rooms, that actually goes out to the east. And that one isn't, so that one isn't as old as the. The twenty-two, twenty-three pipe. So that looked like to be in good condition on that end. Over on the elementary, I I know you addressed some piping current, or uh, not too long ago for these bathroom groups. Um, and there is a little bit of a dip, but I think that was, um, some of that was replaced. But along this hallway, and Todd, Bobby kinda helped walk me through this too, is the, the piping along this hallway is holding a lot of water. So that would be one that I would recommend that that we get updated. Um, and those are the two areas that I know of currently, there is some piping along here. And I just need to have a hundred percent from the guy who scoped it that. Um, that this piping didn't have standing water. It, Bobby didn't think so, when I was looking at it, it it was hard to tell which picture or which video went along with which pipe. But right now, um, based on the conversations had, this, the highlighted and red are are two worst areas. Um. So I don't have a final, final budget, but when we get to the budget, I'll show you that I do have an allowance in there for, for. Doing a pipe, you have to do that pipe first thing. Brian, I heard that you guys did some, some replacement over here in the high school at one point and cut up.
Yeah.
A section of that, cuz it, you could feel it in the floor.
Yeah, right in there.
Yeah. Do you remember when you did that, when you connected to that pipe, were the ends that you connected to in decent shape?
Yeah, they were in good shape, yeah.
And how many years ago?
I think it was Josh.
So Josh was from twenty thirteen to fifteen.
Okay, so. Well, I was pushing that ten.
He probably not in his early this time, so.
Okay. I, I, I still think there is a cleanout in that room, um. And then you have the bathrooms, and you have that manhole, if we could get the plumber to scope that again, I think that would be in our best interest. Just to decide where that, you know, the condition of all that, cuz that, that is catching your. Your women's bathrooms and your science rooms on the third floor, um, along with some other miscellaneous bathrooms. I think there's a staff bathroom, administrative bathroom on this side. Um, and then with some walls that were open, Dave and I were walking through, looking at the, the actual condition. And the piping doesn't look bad, so anything above grade at this time, I don't think you need to, to address that at this. It, and, you know, it was exposed in the the closets and stuff, and I think it looks good. So at this time, I would say unless you're gonna do a major bathroom remodel, I would leave it as. And then the next one, looking at, I would consider this deferred maintenance um on your kitchen renovation and expansion. Um, if you guys have a better idea of what, what you would call that, I don't, we did talk last time, there could be some things too where. If that were to go down, what are your options when you talk about freezers and stuff? Um, but I would say deferred maintenance, cuz they could, and the space is beyond its, its life expectancy and beyond. The way you used to use it and where you're using it. So looking at that expansion too, and I just left in those guidelines on a typical kitchen area. So here is the budget for those top priorities. And keep in mind, I put in an allowance in that sewer pipe, and that was um based off a kindness. The cost that you guys spent before, based on the area that we, that I think would be your worst areas that would need to be addressed. And then also with some inflation, cuz that was a couple of years. Has it went down? No, it it doesn't go down. You can see with that classroom improvement.
And what, what did we give up from your previous proposal you did two weeks ago? Was the doors, the tuck, the interior high school doors, I think, was something we had included. The tuck pointing, which we thought we would make a sort of a ongoing maintenance.
Yeah.
Uh, what else?
Then that above-grade sewer, or above-grade domestic wire in the high.
Okay.
Yeah. And then I just wanted to show you a couple other improvements that might make sense. And I just, just something for conversation and to talk about. Um, and here are the three items, so bringing back those classroom doors. I know, and those are all the doors, not just the rooms that we were, um, that I had highlighted, that would be all the high school doors. And just because that, you know, is something as you're walking through the hallways, I think as a district, you'd wanna be consistent on how that looks. Um, the student lockers, I brought that back, and I kinda, I saw that back on, um. On the, the assessment or the listening sessions and the facility assessment is where we saw those. And I brought it back because of, you know, updating those classrooms and as a district, do you guys wanna say, okay? We've made the improvements to the high school. So I just brought it back to the table for discussion, our high school's updated, and you guys can, you know, feel like those that has been addressed. Um, and if not, I mean, that's something too, maybe as a district, you guys could try to address as you go, if you wanted to. Increase the size of of those lockers. It was a thing too, Anna, you know, she goes, well, what are we doing that the students have said? And this was something too on their, on their list, so I thought, yeah, that would be something maybe to consider, that those get updated. Because you've heard of the students. Um, and then on the far right, this would be a furniture allowance to, to replace. You do have a, a lot of nice furniture in the classrooms, but some is still the older desk chair connection style. And so there's an allowance to replace the older furniture in the high school classrooms. The areas that have the newer furniture would remain, so this would just be for the ones that are old. And I, I just know that when it gets down to, you know, you're, you're in construction or you're in design, and you. You get these fresh new classrooms, and then they're like, well, where's our furniture? And they're like, well, we have a budget for that, you know, and and then you have no money, and and it is a huge expense. So I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that. Um, it also could be something that you might have on a rotation of your current expenditures. And are gonna continue on with that, that that's fine too, it's, but at least you're aware as a, a school board, um, that that. Furniture is not included in your um classroom remodel. And then as far as like the whiteboards or the interactive boards, right now, you have them in the classrooms. And they would be reassembled, so they would be produced.
Do you have a budget for window?
I do not.
I would hate to see those lines.
Yeah, do you think they would survive? Good, well, you're right, window covering sound.
What about, um, or, I mean, I'm checking, but, uh, IT.
Um.
Is that all gonna need to be replaced, or is that built in somewhere, or, I I don't, or reused, I should say, maybe?
We would reuse, um, for sure on the whiteboard and reuse what you have.
Right, I'm not talking about the wifi, the, you know.
That would be.
Airports and everything could be reused.
Could be reused, yeah.
To the extent that maybe they are in line, because some of that stuff, you know, it it goes out of date so fast. That, you know, it may be time for upgrades and some of that too, and. There have been times when we've gotten grants for some of that kind of stuff, or you can get the E-rays and some of that technology, whatnot.
I wouldn't, we can design though, and be able to clean up a lot of the whole technology, cuz I think some of that's just there. So, you know, once we're in a design phase, then we would be meeting with user groups on, is this actually used? You know, or is it not? And then being able to clean up some of it too, and having it inside the wall versus things that you've added along the way, and they're mounted up.
Oh, I was wondering, okay, so for the hallway flooring, is that included in there? That might be something else to, you know, redoing the rooms, but some of that, like the third floor, how the flooring is good, really, but the second, you know. As you go into, it, it would have new classrooms, and then you walk up to the.
Yeah, yeah. So Kirk, you got second, second floor hallway?
Yeah. First and second.
Probably first and second for some of that. And the lower maintenance. So you can just see adding those items, how that would adjust that, that budget. And then this is just kinda bringing back, you know, what was on that original slide on your needs, and kinda the areas that you'd be addressing. Uh, what's different from our last meeting, you know, that exterior maintenance, that's something that the board was gonna, or the district was gonna kind of address as you go. Um, and then you gain more interior maintenance needs and that additional space for education.
You might have pictured something we talked about. So when we walked around yesterday, we were talking about more things on our list that we could take off, you know, than the ADA bathrooms. Maybe looking at something second floor, if we could put a, you know, that possibly you're not maybe an ADA bathroom up there. Like Lori said, if you're on the third floor, and you're in a wheelchair, right, you gotta go all the way down to the first floor into the gym in order to find a bathroom fuse. So something like that is move along, some things that we were looking at. The PA replacement in the clock, I think is, if we redo rooms, that would definitely be something to, with Larry of. You know, with new technology, um, being able to do maybe a different PA system with clocks, you know, there. I think there's other things that we could maybe tick off as we start to move along and we start planning.
Okay, any other questions on that, or if not, we're, we have Anne online. Any other questions on that at the point, or should we talk about financial? All right, Anne, you're up.
Oops.
Uh, we can't hear you, hold on one second.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, oh, good morning. I don't um have a specific presentation, but what I think is really helpful for, for boards, especially as you're talking about projects. Is to kind of talk through what is the process for financing? What is the process for financing a project, um, like this and a project that you, that you are contemplating? So first of all, um, I'll just introduce myself. My name is Anne Willett. Uh, I, I am with PFM Financial Advisors. We've worked with the district in the past on, on bond issuance. Uh, we work with just about every school district in North Dakota, um, issuing debt for capital projects. So you probably, probably don't necessarily recognize me, but my predecessor, Myron, um. Did do work with the district back, I think it was back in 2015. So. We are, we are kind of the, the right hand for the financing, um, aspect, um, for districts to kind of walk through, how do we pay, how do we pay for these projects? So. What North Dakota school districts, what you. Be the, the first or the major authority that you have obviously is to go to voters through referendum. Ask for a project to be approved. Um, and then you would finance that through, through your sinking in interest levy. And as part of that process. Um, you know, if voters approve a, a referendum. You have then have access to the state school construction loan program. Uh, through B and, through BND, DPI and BND kind of administer that. And then you also have access to issuing bonds in the open market. And again, those. You know, if you go through the referendum process, uh, your debt is financed through the sinking in interest levy. So you'd be, uh, raising that levy in order to pay for the debt. So you don't have to come up with. Existing revenue than to pay debt service on a referendum project. So kind of what the, what the process looks like is you first go through the referendum process and of course we provide. Estimated tax impact. So once you would settle on an amount. Um, if you decide to go ahead and ask voters, once you settle on an amount, uh, we provide that tax impact. And you call for a referendum. And then once you go through that process, if, if it is approved. Um, then we kind of take a look at. What does the financing piece look like as far as when do you need funds? Um, what is the lowest cost option? Because that is, that is what we're going for, obviously is to. Find the lowest cost option for you. And right now, that is, that is the loan program, uh, through BND. However, those funds are limited. Um, but in this last legislative cycle, the. Maximum that you can apply for through the loan program was increased to fifteen million for projects under seventy-five million. Which is great news for districts. So, um. It is the lowest, the lowest cost option. So then after a referendum would, um, you know, if the referendum passes. We look at, uh, like I said, when, when do you need funds? Um, the deadline for applying for a loan is the end of March of every year. Um, and. So depending on when, depending on when you would have the referendum, it would kind of determine when you could receive funds through the loan program. Um, typically if you, if you apply by the end of March, BND, um, usually can turn around. Those funds by, by June, I would say. That's been our experience. Um. So kind of, kind of in a nutshell, that is the process and, and my job is to walk you through. That, you know, the, the entire process of then receiving your funds and making sure that you have funds available when you need them for the project. Does anybody have any questions? I know that we have run some tax impacts already, um, based on different project ideas. Um, or project amounts. The, the latest one here is that sixteen point five million. You will see. Um, for a hundred thousand dollar residential property. It is about two hundred and fifty dollars a year. Um. And that hundred thousand is the true and full value, uh, of a, of a residential property. And you'll see on the commercial property, it's about two hundred seventy-six, two hundred seventy-seven a year. And then we do provide these, these ag numbers per acre. Um, it is based on the, that cropland, non-cropland and the average. Ag land total. Those are numbers that are released by the North Dakota State Tax Commissioner. So they're, and they're based on county. Um, so it's a, a county average that is published by the tax commissioner. And I'm fully aware that some ag property. Um, the true and full value would be less than, um. One thousand, one hundred fifty-eight dollars per acre. Um, and some might be more. So this is just, you know, to give a picture of what the tax, the tax commissioner has published per acre for your county. Or for the main county, I should say, and, um. We, we understand that it's different. And if you, when you go through the referendum process, we provide a tax calculator. For your website. That would allow taxpayers in your district to go to your website and plug in their true and full value of their property, whether it's residential. Commercial or ag. Um, they can plug that in and get a good estimate of what their individual tax impact would be based on what their true and full value is of their property. So as you can see down, down, um, at the very bottom, the, the. Estimated mil increase would be fifty-five point three seven mil on sixteen and a half million. Now, another thing to note is when I run these tax impacts, I run them based on. The, the open market rates because. In the event that there are not funds available in the DPI or the BND loan fund. Um, you would have to issue your bonds in the open market. So. Rather than presuming that you would receive a loan, um. Which would ultimately decrease your tax impact. We like to take a conservative approach and. Presume that you would have to issue the entire amount in the open market. Um, now hopefully you would be able to get, um, you know, if it's a sixteen and a half million dollar project, hopefully you would be able to get fifteen million. Uh, through the loan program and that's two percent. Um, as opposed to open rates right now are, you know, right around four percent or just below four percent for twenty-year bonds. So. That tax impact. And if you're curious, what it would look like if you had a fifteen million dollar loan? I'm happy to run those numbers for you to see kind of, okay, what would the tax impact look like? If we were able to get a full fifteen million to the loan program? Any questions at this point? I know it's a lot of information, um, but. I'm, I'm here to walk you through the process and just make sure that you have, you have the funds in your account when you. Need it, um, based on your construction draw, draw schedule.
So, um. And the illustration on the screen right now says the tax impact on a. Million dollar project. But the title of the slide says sixteen and a half million dollars. So is. We're seeing sixteen and.
That's my.
Lori, Lori's shaking her head.
Yes, that's my error at the very top of my slide. Yes.
All right. And so. Please state what I think you've shared with us. Well, first of all, I, I don't think you said that another step, which we already understand we would need to do is to ask the voters to increase our debt limits. Because we currently have only, our limited by law is. Of our total assessed valuation. Okay. So where, that's where we are. So we would. Need to increase that to at least sixteen and a half million dollars, but we can potentially increase it to ten percent. Which would be about nineteen million bucks.
Yeah, that probably would be more, I think, because I think Anne and I talked and she thought that. Says value is probably going to be over two hundred million. So it'd be closer to twenty, but you know, whatever.
We'd like to stay away from those maximums if we can, but this, we need to do what we need to do. So. Then next, once that is done. We'd need to get the voters to approve our project if it's sixteen and a half million. Um, or whatever we arrive at. Um, and then should that be approved? What I heard you say is that there are two sources of debt. One is this. Construction loan program, which is through the Bank of North Dakota, right?
Yes. So it, it is the same mechanism of debt. It's just where the funds are coming from.
Okay. And so. Your, my notes say that. The legislature increased that amount that we're allowed to, to access in that program to fifteen million dollars. So potentially if our number is sixteen and a half million, potentially fifteen million of it. Could come from the Bank of North Dakota School Construction Loan. And you say that's at a rate of two percent?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And so that might leave us with around a million and a half in this illustration that we would need to go out and. Acquire debt through open market bonds, which would have a higher interest rate, which would be. What?
Right now, right now, twenty-year bonds are selling just below four percent. So of course it would depend on where interest rates are at. At that time, you know, at the time that you would have to issue the debt. But that's where, that's where they are right now.
Yes. That was my questions and clarifications. Thank you.
And, and as far as the debt limit question goes, it's kind of up to you as a district, how you want to do that. Some districts. And actually this is a fairly new thing that we've seen with a few districts is they will. Have a referendum asking for a debt limit increase first. And then they will go to voters with a project amount. Um, but what we typically have seen in, for. You know, as far as I can, I can remember is we would have two questions on the ballot. So. Um, you know, let's say you, you decide that you need to, um, move forward with the sixteen and a half million dollar project. You would have that question on the ballot. And then you would also have the question on the ballot, um, asking voters to increase the debt limit. But it's, it's the district's discretion which way you want to go. Um. I know that there, I know that there is some logic in, especially if. If you're trying to. Um, kind of inform what your project should look like. Um, you know, some districts have decided, there have just been a few of them, especially recently. That have decided, well, let's ask voters for a debt limit increase first. And then if they approve that. Then that can inform the size of the project that we will ask for. Now, if you have them on the same ballot, um, and let's say that the debt limit increase question passed. Um, because that's a simple majority that's needed for that, so fifty percent. Let's say that that passed and then the project question did not pass. Then the, the debt limit would be increased. Um. So it's, it's not, it's, when you have two questions on the ballot, if each one is individual. So it's not kind of if one fails, then the other fails.
Except for the second question. That would be contingent on the first one passing, because otherwise you wouldn't have the debt limit available.
Right. So, but, so let's say, let's say voters, voters passed. The project amount, the sixteen and a half, not, excuse me, not understanding that you have to raise the debt limit and the debt limit question didn't pass. Obviously then you would still be, you'd still have to adhere to the five percent debt limit. Um, so yeah. You, you are right. Yep.
That's a weird scenario, but.
Yeah, but I mean, you could, you could then. Go and ask voters. Or, I mean, you could go back and then you wouldn't have to have a second question. Excuse me. On the ballot. So. Um. This, from what we've seen with, with other school districts, you can do it, you can do it either way. And typically, typically it's all been in one referendum, just so that you don't have to. Go through the referendum process twice, but it's completely up to you and your discretion.
When are that school loan, when is that fund replenished? Is that every year or is it on the biennium or?
It's, so this biennium, the, the legislature allocated seventy-five million dollars into the loan program. Now, school districts that have projects that are over seventy-five million can apply for thirty million. Um, so obviously seventy-five thou, or seventy-five million doesn't get you very far if there are several bigger. Projects that are being voted on. But, um, it's a ref, it's a revolving fund. Program. So what BND has told me is typically they will revolve, I think she said about like twenty-two million every year. So in a biennium, that would be like an extra forty, you know, forty-five million that's revolved into the program from loan payments. Um, that are being made currently. So we could think that, you know, it's just a little over a hundred million maybe, um, in a biennium. And they don't, they don't say, okay, this year we're only going to allocate fifty million and next year we're going to allocate fifty million. They will. Issue loans until there are no funds left. And it doesn't matter if it's the first year of the biennium or the second year.
And, and if you were to. Even though they would be allowed fifteen million max, if there were ten million left. Then would they be willing to do ten million? Then you would have another six point five?
Yep.
And how does that get prioritized?
I was just going to talk about that. So one important thing is, uh, which I think is great for districts is it's not a, a, a first come, first served. Application process. So, um, all the applications that are received by the end of March, um. Of twenty twenty-four, DPI, so Adam Tesher will make a prioritized list of the projects. Based on, um, what they, what the projects are. So typically classroom space. Um, probably even HVAC, you know, if you have an aging HVAC system. Um. Kind of more. More, um. What's the word? Stronger, kind of stronger education priority is at the top. So of course that's anything related to education, safety, that kind of stuff. It's, it's towards the top. And towards the bottom would be like recreational, like a, in a gymnasium, auditorium, those kind of stuff. So then what Adam does. He'll look at your project description. What exactly would you be funding with your project? And he places you on that list, that priority list. Um, with all the other applicants. And then obviously the top priority projects are funded first. So it doesn't matter if you would, if you would vote, you know, in March, for example, as long as you had an application in there by the deadline. Um, he would. You would, you would be in the mix with all the other districts that are applying for that biennium or that, that year, I should say.
So is your recommendation, once the board has a, a plan that they want to bring to the voters? At that time, you submit that application so you can get your name on the list? Even if the board or the voters haven't voted yet?
What we have done is. We have waited typically until a referendum passes. However. If you are voting before the end of the fiscal year, the twenty twenty-four fiscal year, so before next June. I, even if you haven't voted, so let's say you're voting in April, May or June of twenty twenty-four. I would recommend that you apply for a loan by the end of March. And then. You would. If there are other projects that have been approved already, they will take priority over your project until your project is, is approved. But Adam has said in years past, and actually Grand Fork Schools just, um, did that exact thing. They voted in May of twenty twenty-three, but they submitted an application before. The end of March of twenty twenty-three. And then their referendum passed. And so they were able to access loan funds right away. Um, now. Because there are quite a few districts that are applying for loans. If you are planning a referendum, um, in the early part of twenty twenty-four. I would recommend trying to get the referendum done before that March deadline, just so that. You are in the, the pool right away. Um, so there's not this, you know, if the referendum passes. Um, so there's not this, you know, if the referendum passes, because then those other districts that. May have fallen below you on the priority list, if they've already passed a referendum, they will get funded first. Does that make sense? So, you can, you can apply, uh, for the loan, as long as you're voting. I, I should say for the twenty twenty-four cycle, as long as you're voting before the end of June of twenty twenty-four. But it could put you at a disadvantage if other districts have already passed their refer- referendum. But maybe they wouldn't rate as high as your project would on the priority list. Kind of put yourself at a, at a dis- disadvantage, um, if you wait to vote after the March deadline.
Anne, I had a question on, uh, so let's say that, uh, they wanted to. Apply for the fifteen million of the construction loan. Is it an all or nothing, or do they say, well, we'll give you eight, or something like that?
Well, it, it depends on the year, so, um. I, to my knowledge, um, in the last couple of years, they have not run out of funds yet. Um, now I know that there are several big projects that are applying this year. And so typically, excuse me, what? B and D has done in the past, well, this would be many, many years ago. They used to do like a, okay, we'll fund your project seventy-five percent. And then, so that they could, they could try to fund some of every project. But I don't think, as far as I know, from what I've talked to Kylie at Bank of North Dakota, is. I don't think that they would do that now, I think they would just fund projects until they run out of funds. If you're the last application and there is, um, only eight million dollars left. And you apply for fifteen million, they would just say, well, we only have eight million dollars left, and that's what we can, what we can fund. Um, but, I don't think, I think it's kind of a game time decision for them. Whether, you know, if they, if they start running out of funds, whether they decide to change how they're funding projects. Um, I don't think that they have a, a, a strict policy in place. Because they've done it differently in the past, so. That would be something that we would have to ask B and D, you know, kind of. If it, if it's looking like there won't be funds available, if they will try to fund a portion of every project. Or if it's just those folks higher on the priority list receive funds until the funds run out.
My other question is, this tax impact is calculated on, entirely on the open market, correct?
Right, right.
So, okay, so if, if they were able to access a good portion of whatever they decide on, if they decide on it. That tax impact could be significantly less, so it's really half the, or, you know, correct? And you'd be able to calculate that?
I could, and the reason why we don't, especially on the ballot, um, that we don't. Um, presume that the district will receive the loan is we don't want. The tax impact to be, um, be lower, and then let's say there are no funds available in the loan fund. We don't want you to have to go back to voters and say, well, actually, there were no loan funds available, and we ran our tax impact. Presuming that there would be, and so your tax impact's actually gonna be higher. Even though it would be completely legal for you to do that, because it's just an estimated tax impact in the ballot. It's not, you're not held to that, you're only held to the project amount, you can't exceed the project amount. But the tax impact is estimated, and so we don't want you, as a district, to be in that situation. Where you have to go back to voters and say, well, actually, there are no lo- loan funds available, and we have to issue in the open market. And let's say, you know, rates are still where they are today. Obviously, historically, we've seen very low rates for, for quite a few years. We didn't even use the loan program because open market bonds were selling better. Um, so they were under two percent for twenty years. But, um, being that open market rates are higher, we always choose the more conservative approach.
Thank you.
So then, so then what, what we have typically told districts is, and when you are, when you are having your public meetings. Uh, for the referendum, that's when you should share that information with voters. That our plan is to apply for a, a state school construction loan at two percent. And, um, hoping that there, there are funds available. And then you can share with them at that time as well, what would the savings be on the tax impact? Um, so you can just be very transparent with that information, um, to voters. But that, um, that it's the best practice to take the more conservative approach with the tax impact on the ballot.
Any other questions for Anne? Thanks, Anne.
You're welcome, thanks for having me.
Right, and that sixty-five is that contingency to the river?
Yeah, so when we look at the project costs, it's, it's contingency, it's, um, a cone for inflation. And any professional soft costs that you need to, general condition costs, permits. So it is the full package, because that's what you truly need for these projects.
Okay, so the next.
One question on that, Laurie, just to reiterate, um, I think back a few meetings ago, you said. Well, when we made these estimates, we didn't include the absolute highest costs or bid. But we didn't include the lowest either, because maybe the low bidder doesn't show up on that day. So, it's a- all costs, all in your best estimate. But you're, you're not expecting something way higher, or, right, lower bids, right?
E- exactly, and then that money is yours to do with you, what you choose to do. And, and maybe that is that you bond for less. Um, and, you know, it's less under taxpayers. Maybe it's like, well, we really did need to get that PA system in the clocks, we can use that for that. So you can kind of, and I shouldn't even say bond for less, it, it would almost be like you could give that money back. Because you're gonna start that process before we get bids secured, um, but you could give it back to the taxpayers. As, as far as like, uh, affect, so. Um, but you're right, and, and we like to be middle of the road, because that way we. Have an affordable project on bid day. And not risk that low bidder notch.
We care if it's up, or bonds up early?
I believe you can.
You can, yeah. You mean the, the existing bonds?
Those are like, let's say we get where it doesn't cost as much for the project that we were gonna do, and we have that, can we pay off bond bidder? Or, here's another question, and I guess Anne's probably gone now, but. Um, if we, if we have both a state school construction loan at four percent and bonds at two percent, do we have the, or vice versa? Can we pay off the, the high interest faster, or is it all spread equally?
I would say that typically your, your payment schedule is established, so you would still have to make payments. Now, how that's structured, Anne might be creative if you want, but I'm guessing that that two percent loan has a, an established payment.
As well, the two percent as well as the bonds, I guess if you.
Sometimes you do interest only at the beginning, um, so we can maybe try to be creative, but. I don't know, I rely on, yeah, for sure. Okay, so at our last meeting, we talked about an open house and getting some community feedback. Since our last meeting, I, I've been talking a lot with our internal staff. And, and kind of just mapping out where the, where the district is at. Um, I know, I know the, the chiller situations kind of expedited, uh, the urgency, right? And, and yet, I don't wanna lose important, it is. Sure, we understand where the community is at. And, what I, our next, I'm recommending is we really need to take the time. You guys have a lot of, you know, the top priorities sort of mapped out, right? So let's take the time to understand where you, how your community feels about those priorities, about what that would cost. And how that would impact them, before the board would make a decision on what, what and when to bring something to the voters. I think we need buy-in from them, especially with the sixty percent, we need the community saying, absolutely, we need this. So I have three different, um, avenues of doing that in the next, let's just say, four to six weeks, okay? One is developing an online survey, and we've started, we've put a, a series of questions together. And this is gonna be, um, something that we can have, um, out to the community for two, three weeks, right? So you can, they have an opportunity, you know, most surveys, we wanna understand the, the demographic of who's responding. Um, so we, we kind of have some of those generic questions at the front end. But then there would be very specific questions, um, in regards to, well, this is an example, but how much? Would you be willing to pay in additional property taxes, um, for repairs and renovations? This will give you an idea, if you're in the ballpark, and we can adjust those, we can adjust those numbers however we want, but that's an example. Um, so you kind of understand what their, what the community tolerance would be as a whole. The, the HVAC system, the chiller is out, maybe the whole HVAC system is in need of repair. You know, do you agree, disagree, or are indifferent about needing to replace? You know, the, the, the board has identified this as the number one priority. And would you feel like that would be something that? The community, or that would be a good? Questions like that, and usually I would say five to ten minutes is gonna be your, your survey. Now, we can do the QR code, what's really nice is you can use your phones. Uh, we have two different ones, we have Survey Monkey and Thought Exchange. Uh, they're both fairly similar, Thought Exchange has some other opportunities too on open-ended questions. That people can raise each other's thoughts, um, and that might be a mechanism too that we wanna incorporate. In addition to this, we could, we could look at that. Um, but making sure that, you know, we can have that QR code, or we can talk about even, I've done a. Kind of a hybrid where we might wanna have paper copies potentially at events. So, does, you know, if someone doesn't have a smartphone or doesn't wanna, um, use their, their computer to do it, they can do it on. Uh, hard, hard copy, it's a little bit harder, because then we input it in, so we can calculate all the, the results. Um, but it gives that opportunity, the, the other thing too is it looks at the IP address, so. I can only take one survey for my home. Now, if someone wants to take one from theirs, and we go and get a bunch of different computers to take it from, uh, we don't, we can't really stop that. Um, but it doesn't allow someone to sit at their home and fill out twenty surveys and, and spew the results. Okay, so we have, we have a, for that, I would, um, right now we have a draft that I need to go through. And then I would like to get it to Anna and the board, and get your input on, on those questions and feedback. And the timeline on putting this out to the community, I would say after the Labor Day weekend. So, doing it today or tomorrow would be, I, I think everyone's on weekend mode and, and the holiday mode. Um, let's, let's have it ready for Tuesday, when they get, get back from the holiday. The other thing is, is community feedback, um, during your homecoming week. And this is something we talked about and mapped out a little bit on that open house. Having an open house that correlates to, um, I know there's a ceremony happening on that Monday. And this is where we could have different stations, and I would ask the board members to be part of this. Where you, um, they can talk about the process, the need, the plan, the tax impact. And then, you know, we can offer a tour, right? And maybe a, like, yeah, and, or something. And, that, that we could have on that Monday, when they, when we're expecting to have this other ceremony. I put five o'clock, I know Anna and I were just throwing lots of times, but maybe five to seven, five to six thirty, whenever that next event happens. Uh, but also capturing your homecoming week is the celebration of your foundation building. So I think it also is a really great opportunity. At your volleyball and football games, to be able to, um, if nothing else. Have your QR code for the survey, have people, or just, just, maybe not that big formal open house, but having people. Um, administration, board members available to talk about. And that would be, Anna and I were also supposed to follow maybe the football game or something, we put up on the fence. And, and please take the survey, we want you to put on, on the survey. And while you're there. And we can do that, yep.
What, poster boards, like something to set up for people to look at, the pictures. We talked to a woman, she, we were.
Yes.
Setting them at the, in the entrance of the central office in, in the gyms.
Yep. Yep, I like that too, Brian. So we, yeah, and we can put that together for you guys. And then, the, the last item on this community feedback, I think we need key stakeholder input. Our meetings, and what I mean by that is going out to talking to key community members. Talking about what, what you guys are looking at, giving them the information about what it's gonna cost and what the impact might be, and getting their feedback. I mean, those would be the key members, I know we've had a few that have came forward, it's, it's nice to hear a, you know, a, a past board member come forward and say. We should have done this ten years ago, I mean, that thirty, I think. I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry you're in this situation. Well, we need, we need not only this group to say, this is what we need, but we need those big key stakeholders out in the community. Also, also saying the same thing, because we almost need them, you know, knocking on the door, saying, fix this, bring it to the vote, we have to do this. So when we go into that election, we feel real confident that, you know, for the most part, that the, the community is on board, right? And that we have those key players out there helping with the communication, out there promoting, out there educating others. Who, um, are their neighbors and friends, you know, and.
Is that a hand? Maybe you're, uh, um, or do we just say? How do you get people on that board, or?
Well, right now, at this point, I'm not committee. Right now, I'm suggesting, let's as a group develop that list of people, and then divide up, divide and conquer. You know, and, and maybe it's, you know, Brian, you know these, you're going out to talk to them, you're going out to get their feedback. Um, and maybe it, maybe we double up so that you're not alone and people can do it. But, you know, Anna, you're gonna pick a group that you're gonna go talk to, everybody knows people in the community. That personalized meeting with them goes a long way. It, it goes a lot further than that survey per se, but you can't reach.
Right, we can't, as a board, I, as a board, I don't, they can't create a committee, I like that. They, they can create a committee that isn't informational committee, but not necessarily a yes committee, that. Right? I, I'm gonna be.
Well, the board, I don't think is gonna do it, but.
A community that would be.
Yeah, that's, that's what we did, but the school can support it, just not financially. So you can't use school funds for any of the copying or advertising, you know, oh, yes, any of that stuff. That can't be school funds, but as a board member, or as a business manager. You know, you're still a citizen, you're still a taxpayer, you still have a right to voice your opinion. So, you're not restricted, um, to say, well, I can't say anything, or I can't advocate for it. To say, well, I can't say anything or I can't advocate for it.
Is it allowable for the district to create what we're talking about as posters and just for inviting people and saying? Here's, here, here, we want you to come in and see. And this, we're not, we want you to see, not, um, we want you to vote yes, we want you to see, so you can make an informed decision.
Yes, yeah, and so that's allowed. And these meetings, yes, it's going to kind of help guide the future vote yes committee on on these stakeholder meeting. But it is to go out and say, this is what we've been working on, what do you? And then coming back and saying, okay, you know, Bob, he agrees, this is a major thing. Joe, you know. We're going to have, we can't, can't quite go that high. Or Joe was like, the kitchen's fine, you don't need to do that, you know? So just, at least it gives you some guidance and and it can help you guys decide if this is a good plan or not. And then that will be a great list when, when you, when you decide to approve a plan to go to the voters. They're the first people who are going to get kind of knocked on, you know, knock the door down to see if they want to be on our habits. That. That's not the intent of these meetings right now to ask for that type of involvement. It's just to get feedback. And if we can have a diverse group of people.
Um, Shannon asked about handpicking. You need to find the people that you know are going to agree, but you need to, you need to talk to the people that you are, you think are going to be against it. You need to go all across the board and not just, oh, I'll talk to my five neighbors. Or I know this person is really pro school, I'm going to talk to them. You need to talk to a wide variety of people. And and seek out the naysayers because you know who they are.
And I would say too, we need the mayor. Where's the mayor at? That any of us know, you know, we need to have someone talking to the mayor, the city, where would the city be at? And they also, they'd like to be informed. If you all, I think that they're more. But where are they at?
You have a community club, that kind of a thing. Chamber, okay. Yeah, those are great places to start.
Hey, we've been working on this for a long time. You want additional feedback before we make any decision. Um, how does that feel? Does that feel good to you guys? Does that make sense to to take time to gain that input before you make a decision?
Because I'm new, so, okay, so the city council meetings, Lions Club, Chamber, um, I think there. Is this, does? Does this come from the face of the board or is this? I mean, that has to be the people is, I guess I'm curious as to what Anna and my. Responsibilities are. Is this Anna and Shannon going to those meetings or is this coming from the board saying? Hey, this is the board or are we supposed to, or maybe it's a combination of both? I don't know, or?
I would say a lot is going to be Anna or Volker as far as near the face of the system. As far as like getting out to some of the groups, but we also need the board members to be alongside. Or if no, if the two board members know someone close, that would work too. I mean, you can, we can mix and mix it up. Um, but when it comes to referendum and communication and the main spokesperson, it typically ends up being the superintendent.
On yours, let's say you have a committee later on, they decide to go to referendum, and you have the vote yesers and.
Yep.
So how do they find that then? Is it somebody just in the community?
They contribute it. People, they'll ask people for money. You know, it, it's not like you're going to need twenty thousand dollars. I mean. It's just to. Create flyers and, you know, and buy signs and. Um, yeah, they just ask people for donations, you know, people doing fifty bucks. I can't even remember what the budget was, uh, so I, you know, but. You think a couple thousand dollars would probably do it.
So when it comes to that though, we as a board, then I'd be careful not to.
Yeah, so you.
Donate to that, I mean, how does that work?
As an individual, you can donate that, but um. Yeah, so our board was really not involved in that group. I I went to all the meetings and just to provide information. Basically and answer questions, so they, they did their own thing and they were great. And you have those people in your community too. You already know who they are, I'm sure of that. So you get the right people, they'll just run with it. And you don't, you don't, you know, you're not going to tell them what to do. You're just going to answer questions for them, provide, you know, influence.
But you can, you can, you don't. Yeah, however you want it. Okay, so this is just mapping out, you know, from now until September or now until October. Um, disregard that eighth on the online community survey, but what what we're trying to achieve of getting the. And then I would say and I. Come back with all of our feedback and then we'll, I call it shape and enhance your plan based on what we hear. And if we get blown out of the water and and everyone's like, no, then then we regroup. And and yet, you know, I, you don't want to do that on election day. We want to do that. We want to have a good feel going into this before we.
And so with this timeline, if we come back and I turn for a change, okay, so obviously it depends on what, what we hear. But with the assumption that the community believes this is a good idea. Or what are we looking for for election date, time-ish?
I think we talked about that once we hear, because, because we still, I said fifty-five days because that is what is in um. Uh, century code. And from financial, our financial advisor, she says go sixty, give you five day buffer. Um, so. Once we kind of know where the community at is at, then we can map out, we have sixty days prior to when we're going to go. So then let's map out that plan.
October first, sixty days, you know, we convene back in October. We're obviously not going to do it, I don't think, end of December, middle of December, so that's probably closer to January or later.
Yes.
That was. Yep.
Summer, it would be to our benefit for March, though.
Correct.
Yeah. And that's another good drive.
We need a special board meeting.
Well, September twentieth is your regular board meeting?
No, uh, fifteen.
Fifteenth is regular, twentieth, we already, I already have it up as special on my.
Oh, I had written down the twentieth, so we didn't know that that is a special.
Yes.
Okay, so when is your October meeting then?
Yes, we have.
No, October thirteenth, right? No, because. Twentieth, then you're gone, so it was.
That was a long meeting.
Oh, yeah.
So then I would recommend we start looking, uh, okay, so I have the twentieth down and you're right, we did that because we're going to do a special. Meeting, so looking at maybe the following, the last week in September or the first week in October to hear where those results are at.
So not on the twentieth?
Not on the twentieth.
Okay.
I thought that was your regular meeting and it really was.
I think we, we used the twentieth because that was at least fifty-five days before November fourteenth or whatever anticipated election date.
Um, and I was just going to say, because at that meeting, we were just going to bring back what we first date.
And so maybe that's a little too soon when we're saying we're having meetings and the survey open until the twenty second.
Yeah, if it's not your regular meeting, let's not do that. Um, and then October, what'd you say was your regular? A Friday. Yeah, Friday the thirteenth. That's your regular, um, we need to lock in a date right now, is that? We have. Miranda, that's a good, what you just said there, help, like, let's kind of map out these stakeholder meetings and when and where we can get it. Get in front of them and then decide on a special board.
I have Lions Club on the nineteenth.
September, yes.
The bench here on your house.
Zooming in October thirteenth on the Fridays at seven.
Will you guys give us some kind of an outline or some kind of a plan for our present events? For, you know, each board members to those people, and not that it would be a presentation, but maybe some just some talking things or something.
Yeah, I guess.
And so visuals would be nice though, but I don't know that in every location that we meet, we would have an op, you know, we would have a screen and a projector. Some, maybe even a.
Yeah, that I'm right. Even through like, you know, something you can hand community of. QR code or some background or whatever, it's been, we want your feedback, you know, and we need your feedback, yeah. And we should be putting that in the paper, we should be putting it. On the website, the business website. I was just, one last thing here and I'll, and I'll give the floor back. This was, um. This is. So this is a referendum that, that is being held in November for Wadi Na Deere Creek. And this is the website we put together for this. So the beginning, and it's a separate website, we created a, a logo and a, a, you know, a slogan for theirs. This is the homepage talking about. Have a delay on that. Going in here isn't. There we go. Um, you know, you could play, you could click on the, the challenges. This is going, you know, this is their plan, but. And this is all stuff that we put together. And then. Learn. Learn about how we're going to address this, so this would be the plan. Anyways, just to give you a sneak peek on what, what we would do and, and I know Monica, last time you asked, do you guys help with? Like the messaging and stuff, so this is what we would, we do, and then even to the point of like resources. Different. So this is a fast fact, so we put this together, this would be something that would be at the district, and this is just a quick one page handle that you guys can give to. To help inform. Anyways, that was just a sneak peek. I kind of wanted you guys to see that as far as how we help in that communication planning process.
Okay, I have a question for you. I believe. Um, I asked you if you had, or maybe during our, our conversation that you and I had for an hour or so last week. Have. What, what would I say to someone who says, you want to put that kind of money in a hundred year old building? Is that building even worth saving? Okay, and I think you said you would, uh, you know, we had structural engineering, we identified the deflection in the science room floor. And you were going to have a conversation with the structural engineer and say, well, was there anything else that? You know, that we, that we anticipate that this building is just not worth um doing these enhancements?
Okay, so I did talk to them and, um, it can last forever if you continue to make those improvements. And, and so, um, you're going to have to like any building, you're going to have to invest. And it can be a long, and it can, it can serve your purposes and it's, and it's actually a very beautiful building as long as you continue to invest. Uh, so yeah, it is worth the, worth putting this investment if you're going to be there long, absolutely. If the, the board's vision is like, oh, we're just trying to get by because we really want to build, then no, don't do it, right? Um, the one item, there's a few things on the structural engineer uh list that, um. You had mentioned that you guys already addressed, so there was some, some major cracking at the top of the parapet. And I, I hadn't even seen it, but I know you guys addressed it, that's why I didn't see it. But five years ago, we had that as a, as a theme. And those are things that, yeah, when you're going to continue to just make those improvements, it will last a long time. The one thing is that the tuck pointing, I think we, I just, I know you're thinking of using di- different funds to do that. Just don't. Forget, you have to make those investments. Um, there is some cracking down in the main, the lower basement area, and that hasn't changed over five years. And and ultimately the, the um, the structure itself is, is in good condition. I mean, but there are cracks and they're settling and there's, you know, it is still a hundred year old building, so, but nothing has. Expanded since his, his, since his um inspection. And so he just felt that that would be, you know, you're going to have to monitor it and and they get a lot worse, we'll have to invest. But no different than your house, right? You got it. Got to keep investing. I would remind some of the old presentations last night, and one thing that kept standing out to me is. It's exceeded its life expectancy, it's exceeded its life expectancy, well, at what point is it just going to die? You know? Well, yeah, but I, you know, even the boiler and all that, it's, it's kind of scary.
And that wouldn't be in the.
Yeah. Yeah, and how old is boiler? Do we know? We need two? Forty years old?
Relatively speaking.
And that's electric boilers. Is the other one older? With a backup, right? And I know the electric boilers. Like size, adding the handle, they handle the buildings and then the backups.
Thing that we value this whole process is. There has to be a better way to report and keep track of things, right? Or like we already finally found our original drawings because the structural engineer had the nineteen twenty-three plan, right? Which we couldn't better, even like they're asking about asbestos, trying to find. When the last time the asbestos was, you know, and, and luckily we've got people that have been working here for a while that can tell us, like. It was done in this year. I know it is, but find, you know, it's just that. Things are scattered and, you know, and it's, it's frustrating and to try to figure out, so that's one of the things is, goal is to, let's get it. And once they, with Shannon, things in order so that people in the future can go and look at it and say, what were, what did they do in twenty twenty-two?
Key improvements done.
Or it might probably help you with that.
Yeah, I. And it's funny because yesterday Bobby was walking around and goes, well, we had a box of plants. I said, yeah, I know, I've, I've looked at those, but they don't have what I need. He goes, really? So he brings me up to some room on the third floor and pulls out this box, they have all the dry. Now I'm just going to check it a little bit better and hopefully it goes scanned in and I can put them on my. Now I'm just gonna check that a little bit better and hopefully it goes scanned in and I can put them on my.
It's all good drawings.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. It's like a few years ago when I, I had to call Tom to ask something about the reorganization of the district back in the nineteen seventies or nineteen fifties. Well, on the second floor in the safe, there is a file that has all that information. It went up and sure enough, she locked that file holder right where Tom said it would be.
Wow.
So Tom might be a good researcher. We lost heart, that was our mind of knowledge about this school. He knew that stuff, he knew this building inside out, you know, and then.
Okay. Any other questions for Lori or for discussion regarding the next steps? And we'll, we'll communicate individually with board members about who could or should attend with Anna, some of these upcoming meetings. And if you think of others, that other meetings or gatherings that should be, would be a good place for us to share information, please. All right, you have one more item on the agenda and that. So what, what are, what is, what is our next step with considering a chiller?
I guess I already, Aaron, you know, I guess without the emergency declaration, do you as a board want to continue to look at replacing that chiller? Do you want to wait, see what happens with this whole process? What, what do you want to do?
What is harmed by going ahead and advertising for bids for a chiller? I mean, if, if we don't get any bids, we don't get any bids. If we get bids, we can choose to act on it or move ahead with one, or we can choose to say no. We're, and by that time, maybe we have more information about what the community, the reaction of the community.
Okay, Brian, you may have to help me on this one, but I would say that we don't know the exact specs of it, right? So when we put out for a chiller, then we have to have specs on we need for us. I, I don't know what, are we that far?
Not necessarily, I guess, unless we're going to go off of the history of what Dave knows and as far as the one that we have right now. Or if we want to size one a little bit bigger, if we decide to do some expansion or if we want a redundancy, I guess what we really want to do. I guess I personally don't feel that it's necessary to get engineered because we have a what we have and what it's been able to do.
So what have you been looking for in your research?
Well, like the information that I handed last time was the one that was a two hundred and twenty ton. And that's probably, I, I'm just gonna say it's probably a little bit bigger than what is needed. But if we decided to add on or part of the system would ever fail, that we would never miss a beat in the school as far as going to school.
Is that chiller gonna be used, let's say that the fridge or the kitchen is, we go through the kitchen remodel, what unit or what system will that be in?
Well, that would be to be determined based on the engineer drives. I can't say one hundred percent. But without covering all this, you know, to do the chiller, we would be in, we'd just be running piping over there from the chiller system. It's possible. I just can't say a hundred percent what the engineers would decide is the best option. There's direct expansion to it. We did something where the kitchen was on a standalone air conditioning system.
Um, another piece that would keep this would be our budget, right? So we earmarked a hundred thousand dollars for, from the, um, special, or not the special reserve, but from the miscellaneous funds. We had a hundred thousand dollars before we had in there for, for a chiller. And that was one of the things that we had talked about, not that that's necessarily the bit. That was the mark that we were looking at was the hundred thousand, so budget would be another thing.
And then we have that hundred and eleven from the insurance feedback too.
And so alternatively, if we, okay, so we have that hundred thousand, that's probably less than half of what we would need for the chiller. Alternatively, we could redirect, perhaps redirect those funds to tuck pointing, which is something that our engineer says, this really needs to be done. Not, I mean, not today, but we shouldn't put it off. We could give perhaps a head start.
When you were talking about that, I was thinking if we didn't buy a chiller, it could work on the tuck pointing. If we waited for the chiller till after, you know, yes, it's gonna push it out, but maybe we'll get lucky. Brian's been pretty resourceful on finding something. Maybe we would be able to find something in March or April, once we know what our path is and start to look for something for next fall. Having it placed. I don't know, I mean, not knowing where we're at, then it's just. Is getting a chiller now, just putting another band-aid on our overall issue?
No, it would be, it'd be the start of a major repair. It'd be one, it'd be one less issue that we would ever have to worry about in school.
You're suggesting that whatever chiller that we would acquire would become a part of the the project.
Absolutely.
Project. And, but by going ahead and seeking bids to acquire it sooner, the differences we would have cooling in the fall of twenty twenty-four and the spring of twenty twenty-five. And then I'm told that if this project goes forward, it's all completed in the summer of twenty twenty-five and we go into, so, so we would be getting a chiller for the spring of twenty-four and the fall of twenty the springs, no, actually fall of twenty-four and spring of twenty-five. For a, you know, a less than a, maybe a two-month window of some really hot days.
I'm just under the impression that if the board goes forward that that, that the proposal is one unit, that heats and air conditions? Or does it still need to be two separate things, but it's one HVAC system?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so there's a chiller and there's a boiler and there's pipes that move that longer around.
Correct.
That two units that in the zoning areas.
Maybe, I mean, you've talked to engineers, if you, you know, this, but I, like, probably they're not saying yes to go with something or not to go with something. I don't want to put you.
Yeah, I'll let you guys.
Yeah, I don't want to.
All right, so we have, we don't have a motion on the floor, we are on the agenda item chiller. What are your wishes for it?
I made my, when we were talking about the emergency, that I believe we should work forward and get a chiller.
Better motion?
Sure.
Okay. Um, so would you, would you state your motion and move that the board seek bids for?
Yeah, I made a motion move forward to seek bids for new children for the high school.
Okay.
Is there a set size?
Well, it does. It needs to be in the bid, I don't know if it needs to be in the motion, but how do our, how does our administration seek a bid for something?
Can that portion be tabled until, I, I'd like to call Chiller Systems and Bargo and have them come down and visit with them and Dave and you also are. And then, then come up with a, a determination of size because I think with all of our knowledge, we can come up with something that is gonna be very efficient for our school.
Okay, so, but you still want to, you, you want to add on the motion today and, and seek more information for the size?
Correct.
Um, so if I can restate that, Brian Sayer moves to move forward to seek bids for an appropriately sized chiller for the high school to be, the size to be determined with consultation with, with administration.
Yes.
Okay, is there a second? Einbacher's second. Any discussion?
I mean, you not, you're not accept all the bid. If nothing means you want, you reject them, you know, so if it comes in and more money than we have and probably do it this way, yeah.
Well, now, let's forget that chunk of money in that budget, correct? The, what you're gonna ask the children to be, it'd be less, right?
You know, I, I've been visiting with a lot of people around and I just tell them truthfully what's kind of going on. And the people that I've talked to, most of them have said, perhaps ninety percent of them that said, needing a chiller in there. And then I asked them, I said, but would you still vote for this? And they'd say, of course we would, because it's something that has been needed thirty years ago. This whole project needs to be done, but we just need to be advocated on what's gonna go on. We just need to know what's gonna go on. And we need to know that it's just gonna be needs for the school. It's not a whole title of wants, unnecessary things. So I think the people that I have visited with so far are totally for it. They just want to be educated in what's going on.
You're talking about taxpayer voters, you're not talking about the people you're talking to about chilts.
No, no, this is taxpayer people.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other discussion? I, I just feel like it's under post orders to put it out to them, not doing the emergency declaration, just because we are already stretching the, you know, we're asking for more money than we can have in years. Super diligent.
Yeah, I think, I think what it, our purpose is a good idea. I don't know, I disagree with the emergency. But pretty much.
Any other discussion?
So if we accepted bid, do we still have to do an emergency declaration?
No, because we put it out and we done it. You know, um, as far as when you're gonna look at the chiller, I think like, um, so Bobby said he'll have
I would like to ask you.
True, so he would like be part of it. So I really appreciate people in the community, they're coming forth and saying, hey, we want this, we have suggestions and ideas, so that knowledge is fair and that's.
And I can see some potential scenarios. We may not get any bids. We may get one bid. We may get multiple bids and we may be smarter by the time we look at them and we might say, no, that's not going to work, let's just keep moving the, the conference plan. Or we might say, oh, that looks great, let's, let's get that one. We can figure out where the dollars go. I, I don't think this closes any doors. So. All right, any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Monica Heinberger.
Yes.
Uh, Brian Sayer.
Yes.
Shu Managel.
Yes.
Ron the day.
Yes.
And Sonny Giel.
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Our agenda. We have canceled the special, special meeting on September. But our regular is September, Friday, September the fifteenth here at seven AM. Okay, with that, I'll declare the meeting adjourned at nine oh five, thank you all.